Good evening and welcome to the August 20th, 2013 San Bruno Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call, please. Chair Biassoti?
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Marshall? Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Chase? Commissioner Sammet? Commissioner Mishra?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Mishra, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Thank you. Item 1, Approval of Minutes for July 16th, 2013.
I move we approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Communications. Chair Biassoti, there are no additional communications this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda this evening? This would be the opportunity for you to speak. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to Announcement of Conflict of Interest. Anyone who has a conflict tonight? No? Okay. With that, we'll move to Public Hearings. First one is 675 Cedar. It's a request for a use permit to allow an addition which increases the gross floor area ratio of an existing home by greater than 50 percent per Section 12-230B1 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Laura, please.
Thank you and good evening. The subject site is on Cedar Avenue, near the corner of Canes Avenue. The lot is 5,865 square feet. It's currently developed with a split level home and a two-car tandem garage. The applicant is proposing to add 1,659 square feet for a total floor area of 2,790 square feet. That corresponds to a floor area ratio of .51, which is beneath the floor area ratio threshold. So the entitlement tonight is just for greater than 50 percent expansion. The project does comply with all other development standards in the municipal code. The addition would be located to the rear of the existing home. The applicant has indicated to staff that the ceiling heights, the design, and the window placement were all specifically designed to accommodate an artist's studio. So two artists actually reside in the home and the space was designed to help accommodate that practice that they have. Although the addition would remain at one story, it would be slightly more visible on the left-hand side. The site does have some cross slope. So on the right side, it has that appearance of a customary one-story home. On the left side, because of the cross slope, it is a little bit taller than we often see. And so staff did work with the applicant, both on the roof lines as well as the window designs, to try to help integrate that addition into the existing home. So the plans that are in front of you today reflect a couple of different revisions that the applicant has made to try to incorporate that addition into the existing house. The exterior materials and colors would match the existing that are on the house today. The project was reviewed at the July Architectural Review Committee meeting. At that time, the committee members made a couple of minor recommendations and staff asked for just a couple of clarifications on the plan. They did make the change of the Architectural Review Committee recommended, and that was to add a backdoor, basically from the media room to provide access to the rear yard. Staff sent a courtesy notice and the required legal notice. We received one written comment today, and that has been provided to the Planning Commission today on paper. It's available as well here in the room for any members of the public that might wish to access it. The public comments were related to two of the standard conditions of approval. So just as confirmation for the Planning Commission and for members of the public. The question, the first question was in regards to the curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And city staff does do an inspection of the curb, gutter, and sidewalk to ensure that this condition of approval is met. So the authority over this condition rests actually with our engineering staff or Development Review Engineer or with our Public Works and Engineering Inspectors. And so they're the ones that oversee this and get the condition, but they are required to meet the condition before the building permit can be final. The second comment from the member of the public was in regards to the tree planting requirement. The city does have a strong preference for planting the street tree instead of paying the in-lug fee. So the member of the public wished to express that preference for planting the tree instead of just paying the fee, and that is the city's standard policy. There are some cases when there's a conflict in terms of the design or perhaps utilities where the payment of the fee is made instead, but that is somewhat rare. The authority over this condition rests with our Parks and Recreation staff and planning works with them, and we do not final those building permits until that tree has been planted or it's been taken care of. And so those were the two comments that were provided by the member of the public, and we do have procedures in place to ensure that those things take place. I would also like to note one new condition, and that's number 10. The remainder of the conditions on this project are all standard conditions of approval. And so with number 10, it's related to FAA notification. And recently, the county has adopted a new airport land use compatibility plan. And so there's been one in place for quite some time. That's a standard requirement. But with the adoption of the newest one, staff has become aware of an FAA notification process. So for smaller projects such as this, we would not expect that notification project, process to result in any changes to the design. So it's, we consider it, our sense is that for a small project like this, it's not too significant and should not impact the design or anything that would affect the discretionary review that you're considering tonight. As I mentioned, the rest of the conditions of approval are standard for this project. Staff does find that it meets the residential design guidelines and it's in compliance with all of our development standards. And again, is only before you because of the 50 percent expansion. So staff would recommend approval of the project based on findings of fact 1 through 7 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 26, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
On finding of fact number 7 on page number 6, it says that any proposed single-family or two-family dwelling conforms to basic design principles. I have this preference that when a member of the public or the applicant reads this, that they're able to understand it readily and that it'd be grammatically correct. This is not a sentence. It's a fragment of a sentence. But the real problem, I believe, is that the beginning says that any proposed single-family or two-family dwelling conforms. That, that's stilted and gives me the feeling that it's extracted from another document. And I wondered if there would be any problem with changing it to... The application for this proposed dwelling reasonably conforms to the basic design principles of residential design guidelines. Would that be acceptable?
This language is from the municipal code.
Right.
So I think from a staff perspective, even if the language perhaps could be improved, I think we would prefer to stay with the language that is within the municipal code as we make the legal findings. But as you know, we're undertaking the zoning code update at this time, and so that would certainly be something we could look at to improve the language at the time of the zoning code update.
Well, this, this makes it unclear as to whether it's a single-family or a two-family dwelling and gives the appearance that the analysis that was made for wording the finding did not include careful reference to the application.
Perhaps then we could make the change to the staff analysis that follows number 7, the legal finding. We could update our staff analysis of that to reflect that.
I don't think that addresses the problem of lack of clarity and ready understanding by the public. Is there a legal requirement that this language be exactly as it's set for?
Vice Chair Peterson, I would agree with our senior planner that it would be preferred to stay with the language from the municipal code. We can certainly look at revising that as we update our code. As far as our language here that indicates that the particular project conforms with this finding, I do think that that's a good location to provide the clarification that you're looking for because seems to me that you want to make sure that the applicant and that the attendees here tonight and those viewing really have a clear understanding that this particular project does conform in certain ways with this required finding. So if we need to modify our staff language, we could certainly do that and could incorporate your, your suggestion.
Well, part of your staff language is the way number 7 is, the boldface is written.
Well, as I said, this can be modified readily. The staff analysis can be. So if you wouldn't mind repeating what you have in mind, we could certainly take your language into consideration and modify our staff language.
Okay. What, well, first of all, let's see if we agree that this is not a sentence.
Well, in terms of number 7, the bolded portion.
Right.
We wouldn't disagree with you. We agree with you to start with.
So what I'm recommending is that you say that this application for a, for a proposed single-family dwelling, I was going to say reasonably conforms to the basic design principles of the residential design guidelines and so on.
We could certainly incorporate that in the unbolded staff analysis language below number 7. We'd be happy to do that.
That's, that's, that, you're missing my point. My point is that the bolded material, even if it's made into a sentence, is so vague as to appear not to, not to recognize that the, there is a specific application under consideration and what, and the characteristics of that application are that it's a single-family dwelling.
We're not necessarily disagreeing with you in terms of that language that's bolded. We can look at updating that in terms of our municipal code. We'd be happy to do that. But in terms of this particular item before you tonight, we can take the language you're suggesting and put that directly into the staff analysis below.
So are you saying that the city attorney has determined and instructed you to use this specific bold language?
All we're simply saying is that it's directly from the municipal code. It's our practice to use that language. If, if we're going to modify it, we should probably go through a formal modification process. I don't think we're disagreeing with you. It's just in terms of timing. We're hearing what you say. We'd be happy to take that under advisement and, and modify this language as needed. No problem with that. But for tonight, we can certainly take your language and put it under the staff analysis, blend that in, incorporate that in. And I think the clarity, the clarification you're looking for, for this particular application would be achieved.
I wouldn't be opposed to, to having a citation of what the municipal code section is right in that bold-faced language. My point is that it's vague and misleading the way it's stated. And I, I think part of the, part of the objective is to have the findings of fact be understandable and directly related to the project. And I'll drop it with that. I can see you're fixed on this language. I'll, I'll just close by saying I think it's vague and misleading.
And we heard you, and we'll come back at a future date with suggested modification. And if you and the commission so direct in terms of the staff analysis, we'd be happy to take your comments into consideration and modify the staff analysis tonight. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Actually, through the chair.
Yes.
Question for Laura. For the comment we received regarding the 36-inch box, could you just explain to the public when this fee is collected and when it's refunded, when the tree is planted?
When the applicant comes in to pull their building permit for a project such as this, a discretionary application, at that time when they pay their permit fees, they also pay a deposit for the tree planting. And so they actually pay what, what could be considered kind of like the in-lug fee at the time of the building permit issuance. At the end of the project is typically when the tree is planted, and that's in coordination with our parks staff. Once the tree has been planted and our parks staff sign off on it, then that tree deposit is refunded back to the applicant at the end of the project. And so only in that case that we discussed, if there was a conflict such as utilities or a physical constraint with the, the project applicant not plant the tree, and then that fee would be kept and put into the in-lug fee replacement, the tree replacement fund.
Thanks. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to step to the podium? Give us your name and tell us a little bit about your project, please.
Right over to the podium. Thank you. And if you give us your name and give us a little description of your project. Hi, my name is Andrew, and I'm the homeowner of 675 Cedar. The reason of the extension is, my dad is, he's our artist, and he lived with me and our, he is, you know, he's a, he have a lot of paintings that required a higher ceiling for, for him to paint. That's, that's the reason why we, that's the reason why we submit for this project. And also, like, I did talk to, informed, I did talk to my next-door neighbors, you know, the two next to me, and I did ask them if they have any questions. As I know, they don't have any questions other than the, who's paying for the, you know, if, if the house is, if their construction start, who's paying for the cleaning the roof? And, and we work, we work, we work it out already, so.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you mind stepping back to the podium? We have a question from the commission. Oh. Are there any questions? No?
Through the chair.
Please.
I'd like to compliment you on your energy and working with your neighbors. It's a great thing and be a pleasure to the commission that all the applicants would do that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Please.
Mr. I have you read all the conditions of approval? Have you read the conditions of approval on, on the project?
I, me and my architect, we both, we both read it, so.
Okay. And you're in agreement with them?
Yes.
You have no questions or?
No.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? One last chance? Okay. We'll move it back to the commission for conversation, vote, motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
I don't hear any questions. I'll make a motion that we approve Use Permit 13-005 based on findings of fact 1 through 7, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 6 to include the comments Vice Chair Peterson made on number 7.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One. I oppose.
Okay. So I believe it passes. Read one. And there's a 10-day appeal period.
So a question on that approval. So that means that number 7 was approved with the comments that Commissioner Peterson made? I'd like to have a, a reading of what that change was.
Okay.
That was the reason for my, no vote.
In terms of your vote, if that's the reason, you know, we'd be happy to provide that information to you, and that might, you know, change your, your position on the matter.
Personally, I agree with the statement that's here. I have no problems with it.
Oh, okay.
So I was rejecting the revision to that language.
My interpretation of the discussion of the motion was to add a statement at the beginning of the finding to read the application for the proposed single-family dwelling reasonably conforms to the basic design principles of the residential design guidelines. I would then go on to include the remainder of the language with the specifics in finding of fact number 7 staff analysis.
But that does not change the boldened language?
Correct.
Then I'll change my vote to a yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. 4-0, and the item is approved, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Congratulations. I'm sorry. Sorry, Ken. That's okay. Okay. Next item is 131 Cabrillo Way. This is a request for a use permit to allow an addition that exceeds the .55 FAR guidelines in construction of a second story with a transparent window, second-story deck adjacent to an abutting property, has a side yard of 10 feet or greater per Section 12-230B2, 12-230B3, and Section 12-240B1 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff, please.
Thank you and good evening. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to remodel the existing home at 131 Cabrillo Way. Site is located on the west side of Cabrillo Way, is currently developed with a one-story single-family dwelling. The existing home contains three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a living room, kitchen, and a large two-car garage. The application calls for a first and second story addition to the existing home. The first floor will be expanded by 232 square feet to accommodate an interior remodel of the first floor. The second floor will be 553 square feet and will contain two bedrooms and one bathroom. Combined, the home will have five bedrooms, three bathrooms, and will have 2,162 square feet of living area with a two-car garage. The project was reviewed by the July, at the July Architectural Review Committee meeting. At that meeting, the Architectural Review Committee forwarded the project onto the Planning Commission with three staff recommendations. Those recommendations were to include a landscaping plan, to incorporate clear-story windows in the second-story left-side elevation, and to incorporate consistent window trim on all exterior elevations. The plans have been updated to incorporate landscaping plans. Additionally, clear-story windows have been incorporated along the second-story left-side elevation. Staff has included a condition of approval requiring all existing and proposed window trim to match at the time of building permits in the middle. As proposed, the project requires three separate entitlements. A use permit is required for exceeding the .55 FAR threshold. I would like to point out it's only exceeding this threshold by three square feet. However, a use permit is still required. Staff finds that the addition is consistent with the residential design guidelines. The second story is incorporating setbacks from the first story below, which is a common facade articulation technique highlighted within our residential design guidelines. Additionally, the addition will incorporate hardy plank siding and composition shingle roofing which will match the exterior materials found within the surrounding neighborhood. Additionally, a use permit is required for exceeding the 44 percent lot coverage threshold. The proposal amounts to 49 percent as far as lot coverage is concerned. The intent of this requirement is to ensure that there is still active open space on the lot. In this particular case, staff finds that there's still a significant amount of open space. Specifically, there's going to be a rear setback ranging between 12 feet and 33 feet. Additionally, the home will maintain the existing 16-foot front setback. I'd also like to point out that there is a large front porch that measures six and a half feet deep. Lastly, a use permit is required for constructing a second story with transparent windows adjacent to an abutting property that has a side yard greater than 10 feet. Homes in San Bruno typically have a setback in the three to five-foot range. Therefore, we rarely see the specific entitlement. The applicant has incorporated clear-story windows along the second-story left-side elevation which will limit direct sightlines into the adjacent property owner's rear yard. Therefore, we don't anticipate any privacy impacts. Staff sent a courtesy notice and the required 300-foot legal notice to property owners. Staff received one comment, and those are written comments that we received today that have since been distributed to the Planning Commission. There's two specific concerns that were mentioned. There is one heritage tree located on site. The concerned citizen is requesting that staff inspect the heritage tree prior to granting a building permit and to inspect that heritage tree once construction is complete to ensure that the tree has not been damaged. Staff typically does not inspect trees prior to permit issuance. I would like to point out that this one heritage tree is located along the rear property line, probably 25 feet from the proposed expansion, and it will not be removed, and staff does, does not anticipate that it will be damaged during construction. Another issue that was brought up was the citizen was concerned the potential impact construction-related activities could have on adjacent properties due to the site being located on the cul-de-sac. This particular citizen is requesting that staff further send out another mailer to the surrounding property owners informing them of this project. I'd like to point out that we did send a courtesy notice. We did send a 300-foot public notice, and we did not receive any phone, phone calls or concerns except for the written proposal or written two items addressed tonight that are before us. Staff will encourage the property owner to inform adjacent property owners of the construction during our normal pre-construction meeting that we have just prior to the building permit being issued, though. Overall, staff is supportive of this project. We do recommend that the Planning Commission approve the project, subject to findings of fact 1 through 7 and conditions of approval 1 through 27. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
In reference to the tree, if, if that tree had, you found it was diseased, would you then handle it differently than to have it remained as a heritage tree?
If the tree were diseased, first, we would probably want to, we would want to get a professional's opinion, so we would rely on an arborist's report to make that official determination. If it were diseased and the arborist was recommending that it be removed, we would, we would request that the applicant or the homeowner follow that arborist's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
These are the comments of, of the member of the public? Is that right?
Correct.
Where is that? What location do they come from?
31.
Are they also, is it a, a neighbor on Cedar Avenue or on Cabrillo or where?
It's unclear. You wish to, that person wished to remain anonymous.
Are they a resident of the city of San Bruno?
I believe they are a resident of the city of San Bruno.
So there was no name on the, on the, on the questions that were provided to you?
There is no name, no contact information. What you have before you is what we received this afternoon.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
So these, what we received this afternoon, is it the same person on both?
Correct.
Okay. Both addresses. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come to the podium, give us your name, and tell us a little about your project, please?
My name is Kathleen Morgan Clark, and the only reason we're doing the addition is that my elderly mother-in-law has been taken in by my husband and myself, as well as my 19-year-old son's best friend who recently became homeless. So we now have five people living in a three-bedroom home. Two of the bedrooms are pretty small, and so we need extra space since there's five of us living there now. And we love San Bruno. My husband's been here since he was 11, and we're both 62, so he doesn't want to move. And I've been here since we got married 20 years ago, and I don't want to move. So we've temporarily, well, not temporarily, we bought a house up in the Monteverdi. Monteverdi area of San Bruno to stay in while we hopefully get approved for this addition because we love living on Cabrillo. It's a great street. We know all of our neighbors. We've actually spoken with, I would say, almost every neighbor on the block about the addition. And the one concern was the people on the left-hand side, and we've agreed to have the clear-story windows so that they don't feel impacted by our addition. In addition, the tree I think that they're talking about is most likely our pear tree, or maybe, we have a pear tree, two plum trees, and a peach in the back, none of which we're going to take out. I make jam from them every year. So the trees aren't going anywhere. And we did have, I don't know if they call it a heritage tree or not, but it was a very large liquid amber tree in the front yard, and the city took it out because it was damaging the foundation next door. And they're going to put a new tree in. It's a city tree. And we didn't want it to be put in until we did the upgrade because we don't want to damage it, but we used to have a very large tree in our front yard. And I'm not sure if there's anything else that you want to know about the project other than we need some more space because there's a lot more people than I thought would be living with me when I was sixty-two.
Very good. Thank you. Hang on just a second. Are there any questions from the commission?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I have to again compliment you on talking to your neighbors about this. It's a very positive step forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this? Please step to the podium, give us your name and...
My name is Jim Evangelist. I live at one oh-five De Soto Way in San Bruno. And I have three points that I wanted to make, two regarding the flyer that was given to us. One being that in your description, although I'm sure it's accurate according to building code and whatever municipal code is required, I, I think that it, it wouldn't hurt to put a layman's interpretation below it if it's legally allowed, so that people would really understand what this says. The second point is there's no plan view of the footprint of the lot and how the house is actually going to be, impact the overall lot size. When you just throw numbers out there, it just, it's hard for people to visualize. And so I would suggest that if you can incorporate that on, even if you require another piece of paper, a, a plan view of it. And then the final, my final comment is really just my personal opinion about the development that's going on. I do applaud what you're doing to help your family. Very admirable. I've lived there for thirty-five years. I, I like the community as well. I like the style of the community that I moved into thirty-five years ago. Single-family dwellings, mostly single-level ranch-style homes. And what I see happening is everybody wants to elevate their homes. And I, I understand the rationale behind it, either increase the value and stuff. It's just that I moved there for this specific reason of the, of the, the look of the neighborhood, the feel of the neighborhood. And the more this continues to happen throughout the city, it changes the nature of all the neighborhoods. And the way it works now is I would, if all my neighbors had to, wanted to increase the, the levels of their homes, I would have to go in and fight every, not fight, but make comments on every home. It seems that, I don't know, there's, I know there's no solution to this right now or anything. It just seems like when they're, when individuals are coming in to change the, the nature of an existing neighborhood, it seems to me that they should have more than to deal with than just a few people who have decided to take the time to preserve the look of their neighborhood. That they should have to, you know, go a little further and, and get the agreement from everybody there that we allow two-story buildings instead of the single-story like we do in our community. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Please.
I just want to comment that over the, my twenty-plus years as a commissioner, one of the things that, well, first I want to acknowledge your comments and understand, being a San Bruno resident of thirty-six years, that there are, there are changes to communities and neighborhoods that take place. Some are impacted really positively and others, sometimes we wish they didn't take place. My experience as a planning commissioner is that there has been opportunities in a variety of different projects that have taken place in San Bruno where there is public input, community workshops, information that neighbors can give. And I really appreciate when that takes place and see the, the community of the neighbors coming together. And many times, the project managers leading these workshops are giving an overview as to why there's a need for a change. Sometimes there's a very valid reason that need to change. It's not always necessarily for the, an individual person, but because something might be blighted or there might be other issues taking, you know, diseased areas, just things that need attention. But particularly when there are community workshops, I would encourage when that takes place, and on the cable television, they do provide the information of those, and your input would be very valuable to hear those pieces. And, you know, thank you for your comments. I do know that as a commissioner and as a resident and as one who has done some remodeling myself, that there are very valid reasons you acknowledge, you acknowledge the applicant towards that. And, and, you know, it would be probably a very difficult process to think that, that everyone would be in agreement with someone's choice. So
Right.
As, you know, it can sound like a great option, but it, in reality, it probably would, would not happen. But the best place is for you to be able to come to a variety of different meetings that we have and offer your comments. There's different projects that take place that change communities, you know, up on Skyline and various ones on Nakamino, and so your input would be very valuable. But when those workshops are taking place, it sounds like you have a bigger-picture view about a community, and I think that your comments would be warranted. So I would encourage you to do that.
All right, thanks. Before you sit down, if there's a staff report over there for this project, if you look at the blueprints on page A two, it shows the proposed footprint.
Oh, okay.
So that, that actually is in the staff report.
I see. I was just referring to what I got in the mail.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, just so that you have it for reference so you can see what...
Good point.
Was there anyone else?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
This is for the, for the commenters' information, also the general public. When the city sends out the notices that there's an application coming up, they have to weigh how much they're spending on printing and mailing versus
Yes, sure.
You know, how much, how much there is need for the information. So that's why you didn't get the, all the, all the planned views and so on, which probably would have been interesting, but...
Okay, yeah. No, I figured that had to be at least a consideration.
Thank you.
It's just that that one view really gives most laymen a better visualization of how that five thousand-square-foot lot is being impacted and how close it is definitely to your house if you happen to be a close neighbor.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
And just one last comment that I'll make on, when you go on to the, on to the, on our, the website, each, each project is listed on there, so you can actually get a bigger-picture view of each one.
Oh, okay.
And not everyone knows that, so
Right.
I would give you the opportunity to look at that in advance.
Thanks.
Through the chair. I have one more comment. On that fire, did you get a website? Is there a website?
I probably did. It's just not, it's not my second nature yet to look at computers for very many things.
No worries.
And then my second comment was that, you had three comments. I agree with the first two. The third I don't agree with personally.
Yes.
But I think the, the way for you to get an agreement or actually have that be valid of a statement would be to establish an HOA or some sort of a body like that which governs the architectural style in that specific area.
I see, right.
Without that sort of agreement, without a, a body like that that sort of mandates and updates
Right.
the architectural features based on the community, it is virtually impossible to enforce something like that.
I get that. It's, it's like comparing a Del Webb development where everything is spelled out to you, or in a town like Hillsborough where they, they make sure everything is, they don't leave too many things open. In our community here, it's more of a Wild West situation, where there is some standards, but there's not as many as some of the other more planned communities.
And personally, I, I agree with having the freedom to decide what a community looks like and not be dictated by a set of, a set of rules and regulations. So I guess it's personal choice.
Sure. That, that's why I prefaced this with, this was my own personal sort of opinion, that last comment.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Was there anyone else?
Oh, no, I'm just kidding. I just wanted to see him go back up.
Thank you for your comments. Did you want to speak? Give us your name and...
Hi, my name's Ahong, and I recently bought a house just next to the, the house on one thirty-one Cabrillo Way. And so I just saw the plan and felt in such a small block, the, the ratio is too, is too big. And from this information, from the information from this file, the ratio is exceed, you know, the zero-point-five-five FAR. And the, the land, the lot coverage is over, you know, forty-nine percent, which is, you know, it's, it's exceeded the forty-four percent of the guideline. So I don't know whether this, this will, you know, will be permit, permitted or not. I understand that my neighbors needs the, the big space, but in such a small space as the lots, and they are, the, the house area is, is quite big. It's ratio is too, you know, it's exceed the, the building code. So that's one thing I'm concerned about, so whether you were concerned about that. And in addition, you know, the, when I bought this house, really I liked my house because part of the reason I like my house is, it's a private yard. So I felt once the, once the new building, you know, addition is added up, I will lose my privacy, privacy backyard. So shall I suggest that in the, in the second floor, there are the transparent windows in the side, in the side wall. So shall I suggest to use, you know, change the transparent window from the, you know, to the semi-transparent window, so I can, I still have part of the private backyard? That's my comment.
Thank you. Okay, so anyone else from the public who would like to speak? No? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move it back to the commission for comment, motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
For the last speaker's benefit, as well as the general public who may be listening, the FAR ratio and the lot coverage ratio, both of those figures are referred to in the building code as thresholds. So if those are exceeded, it doesn't mean they're not permitted, but they have to be reviewed and considered, and a decision has to be made typically at the commission level as to whether they're acceptable. And I, I appreciate your comments. And as far as the windows go, I hadn't thought about that when I looked at it, but I think that's a, that's a very common situation that neighbors are concerned about windows on the second floor that look onto their property. And it looks to me, I'm trying to figure out, are you, could I ask the speaker to come back?
Of course.
I'd like to ask you a question. Which, which side of the house?
Right side of the, I'm in the right side of a house.
In other words, looking at the applicant's house?
Yeah.
You're on the right side?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so...
There are two windows.
So let me see if I understand the plan. Can you wait just a second? Let me refer to this. Oh, so it's those two larger windows that are looking at you, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Matt? Hang on one second. Matt, would you address that, and as far as what we, what staff and architectural views come up with on that item? Because you did request a change on that, I believe.
All right, so if you turn to the plan within the staff report, Exhibit C, and you go to sheet AO point one, you'll see the site plan, actually AO point two, you'll see the site plan, and then you'll see the adjoining properties. This specific property owner resides to the right of the subject site if you're looking at the home in the streets. Along the second-story right-side elevation, there are two windows. One is proposed. Both of those windows are proposed within that second-story bedroom. If you go to sheet A four, you'll notice that on the right-side elevation, there's two full-size windows there. The tran, the clear-story windows are actually on the other side, the left side, but she is concerned with the right-side windows. Those windows actually overlook the carport directly in that property to the right. So there won't be a significant privacy impact as those windows will look directly into that carport.
And to add to that, I would say it's eighteen feet away, property to property, window to the next property.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Did anyone have a comment, a question?
Actually, I've just, with the, the individual who had, who brought up the question about the windows and all that, are you, now that I know Laura showed you the plan and everything, are you, are you understanding what it's...
Yeah, I understand that, but I still, I think I can say the part of the backyard. And what I suggest is that simply change
Wait, through the chair. Could you please go to the podium? Thank you.
And what I suggest is that simply change from transparent window to the semi-transparent window. So it won't block their, your lights. It's the window there. So it just changes the window, the, from transparent to semi-transparent. So it's, it is not a big change. It won't block their lights, you know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's bring it back to the commission for discussion, motion, and/or a vote.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
I, I personally don't agree with changing the window out to a, to a semi-transparent because it sets, it sets a precedent, precedence for us, which if a property is on a slope and neighbor complains that that window is looking into their yard, we're going to have to change all our windows to semi-transparent windows or fully blocking. This is, this isn't end. So I would not entertain a motion such as that. I don't think, your ability to look out of a window and look into someone's face is, unless you build a big box or eighteen-foot fences, it's not going to happen. It's not going to help anyone. And I don't, I wouldn't encourage it. So I'm not going to move forward on approval of this permit if the windows are required to be anything else but semi-transparent, anything else but what's proposed.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I do support the, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Mishra, and not, for a bit of a different reason. One is there's eighteen feet, there is a carport in between, there's enough space in that area. And typically, windows, I didn't have the opportunity of going into the neighbor's backyard. I typically try to look in those areas, but didn't go into, to your backyard to, to look at those, those specifics. And I'm certainly not suggesting to continue something on, on this nature. I would not turn down the project because of it. I would not vote against it because of it. However, I don't support modifying the windows to, to...
However, I don't support modifying the windows to, to being, being non-transparent. And so, we're looking at this, you know, the site subjects, and, and, you know, certainly this is a picture, you're not there in reality, you're not looking at all the components, and in all fairness to the neighbor, I'm not, I'm unable to see all those components. However, I, I don't support changing the windows.
Oh no, I'm just enjoying all the comments, I think it's good discussion. Thank you.
So we're open for comments, motion, vote?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
I move that the staff recommend, I'm sorry, the planning commissioner approves this permit thirteen dash zero one-two based on findings of facts, one through seven, and conditions of approval, one through twenty-seven.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Um, wait, I have a question on the motion.
Please.
So, Commissioner, Vice Chair Peterson's comments that were included in the previous findings of fact, one through seven underneath, you know, is it stated not in the bold? Will that, does that need to be included in, in this particular thing? Is that...
Through the chair, technically, you would be correct, but I'll put my remarks in abeyance on this one and just leave them on the first one.
Okay.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. All right. Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes and there's a ten-day appeal period. And thank you for your comments. All right, the next item is discussion, city staff's discussion, selection of the September twelfth Architectural Review Committee. Through the chair, we're looking for three of your members to come forward for the Architectural Review Committee meeting this next month. So we have Vice Chair Peterson, we have Suj Mishra, and, and Chair Biasadi, thank you. You're welcome. Planning Commission discussion, is there anyone on the commission that would like to discuss something this evening?
I have a few things.
Commissioner Mishra.
I, I recently looked at my building permit that I have open, and I noticed that there were two fees on there, which one is the tree fee, the in-lug fee, and then the other one is the recycling fee. Nowhere in that fee, it actually says that it's refundable, therefore encouraging me to actually follow a recycling plan or submit my recycling manifest, or actually plant a tree, because it really doesn't encourage me to do anything because of the language on there. It says it's a fee, it doesn't say that I can get the money back. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to question where this happens. If we can modify that language on the building permit, that'll help someone to ask a question, how can I get this refunded?
So, Commissioner Mishra, on that, you're speaking about the tree impact fee?
And then the recycling and demolition fee. I believe it's called a fee and doesn't indicate that it's actually refundable.
Okay. We can work with that language.
The second one I had was that, about four months ago, we had, we were tracking some issues that are open, such as, what was taken into consideration for the Whitman Way, or so, the one-way street? And we were tracking a bunch of issues at the beginning of the year, there were about four issues. And now that they've dropped off the discussion, I have no way of going back and saying what happened. And I would like to revive that, if possible.
Okay, we can do that, too?
Actually, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
First of all, I have to retract my participation in Architectural Review, I just checked my calendar and I do have a conflict, excuse me. And maybe another commissioner could volunteer, there we go.
Commissioner Chase? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have some comments. Number one, at the last meeting, I inquired the staff if they could take a look at a remediation project that's in disarray on El Camino Real. Did you have an opportunity to look at that?
Yes, we did, and I was going to report back to you this evening on that, I could do that right now if you'd like.
Did I jump ahead?
No, it's, it's not actually here, but I've got the, the research and was going to share that with you.
Oh, great.
It's not actually on the agenda, but let me go right to that right now. So the address is 160-170 El Camino Real, it's the property right adjacent to the Prudential Realty Building.
Right.
And the background, and many of you know this, the background is that remediation began in about the year 2001. The remediation project was required because there were approximately eleven underground fuel tanks on that property, which have been removed. There was both soil and water contamination on the site, which has led to the remediation project over this number of years. What you've noticed out there more recently is that some of the piping that's been above ground is being dismantled. And actually, in talking to the project manager about this, a man by the name of Paul Dotson, who's the project manager for the remediation effort, he works for TEC Environmental out of South San Francisco, he tells me that the, the wells, the remediation wells were actually shut down in 2010, the piping is being removed currently as of the last three weeks. And they're actually finishing up a remediation closure document to submit to the county, County of San Mateo, and that should go forward over the next few weeks. And he's hoping that they'll get some feedback from the county in terms of that closure report within about six weeks. He did caution me that they're moving toward closure, closure can take quite a while. So, you know, he was reluctant to say, you know, is that going to be within six months or a year? But they're clearly moving for, forward toward closure. The report is, is due to go in over the next couple of weeks, and within six weeks, they should hear back from the county, the above-ground piping is being dismantled. So, I think that's good news. And in terms of the actual reuse of the property, that could take some while, it could take some time to actually get to that point. But the remediation effort, he was hoping would be, would be finished off over the next six to twelve months.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I was here when the commission approved that project to begin the remediation, and I unfortunately don't remember if there were any comments made about whether it would look like a disaster area or not. But if I could, I'd like to ask you to take a look at the application and see that if there's some period before the reuse of that property comes up, if perhaps it could look at least not unattractive.
We can certainly do, we can certainly do that.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair.
Very welcome.
Oh, through the chair.
Please.
I forgot. As Commissioner Johnson earlier this evening was commenting on, looking on the cable TV for various schedules or planning documents and so on, being able to see the meetings, there are a substantial number of people who can no longer look at cable TV to see planning commission meetings, calendars, city council, because they've changed cable providers. And I, I'd like to ask if you could possibly look into providing a feed to the other networks, cable networks that are now in substantial use in San Bruno, such as Dish, Xfinity, and little company, AT&amp;T. I can tell you that South San Francisco, just as an example, South San Francisco and Millbrae both provide a feed to AT&amp;T.
Okay.
I should also, in the interest of full disclosure, say that I asked the cable TV office and they wrote me a letter back after some eight or nine months saying that my request for their providing a feed to AT&amp;T Cable TV was, was dismissed, that they had taken it to a cable TV committee who rejected it. But since I had no idea it was even going there, I wasn't there, so I have no idea what they said. So, I'm setting you up a little bit, it seems to be...
You know, I can see that.
There seems to be a difference of opinion as to what constitutes reasonable public access.
In, in any case, we'll, we'll check into that and we'll report back to you.
Okay, and I apologize for, for bringing up an annoying subject, as it turns out. But I was again reminded this evening that a lot of people do look on cable TV. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Mishra.
Through the chair, I wanted to just add to Commissioner Peterson's comment. YouTube Live would be another venue as well. Personally, I, I don't subscribe to television anymore, and I only look at recordings, so live, live TV option through the internet would be, would be a, a good choice.
Thank you, I'm, I'm aware of the cable TV option, but the rather low quality of the recordings also has got my attention, so I was hoping it'd be a little bit better.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Commissioner Mishra's comments about YouTube Live, that might be an interesting way to go. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
No, I will respectfully decline the comment on that issue.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.